Good evening. Welcome to the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Today is Monday, August 6th. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
... United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, eternal, and everlasting.
Slade?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Felb?
Here.
Geetson? Here. Hoskins?
Here.
O'Connor?
Here.
Randalls?
Present.
Ross?
Present.
President Lanier?
Present.
All are present.
I have an agenda before us. I need a motion to approve the agenda. I know that there was a change made within the last couple hours, so I don't know if you've forgotten where, but there was a... Exactly was it a lease agreement for which school? That was pulled and it's postponed to the next board meeting.
Roosevelt.
Roosevelt. That was it. So, there is an agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as written.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Great, we have an agenda. We will move right into celebrations. Madam Superintendent?
Good evening. I have a group from the Institute for Global Education that is going to present tonight. Good evening.
I think we have a printed copy on your desk, as well as it's in your packet.
It's in your packet.
Do I need to pick up this mic?
Please.
That would be good.
Thank you.
Whoa.
Go help me.
Yeah, we need some room. Yeah. There we go.
Mike, can you please repeat your name again, since you have the mic now?
I'd be pleased to. Mike Franz. I'm glad to represent the Institute for Global Education, which is now in its 28th year with this Week of Peace Education, which you have on your agenda before you now, and along with that, a program guide that we have especially prepared for teachers, drawing heavily upon the United Nations International Day of Peace, which is celebrated throughout the world every year now on September 21st. And it just so happens that that's the week that we pick for the Week of Peace Education. We began this relationship with the board in 1984, but in 1987, correct me if I'm wrong, but Mrs. Neal, you remember, don't you? The focus in our early programs were on creating world peace with the Soviet Union being the evil empire.
The who?
That's right.
Someone needs to fill John in.
In 1987, Mrs. Neal and I sat down and previewed a very exciting program from Educators for Social Responsibility called "A Day at School in Moscow." And we shared that with the teachers on the local television networks. They were encouraged to copy it. We had permission from the producers. I was president of ESR locally at that time, and we were cooperating with IGE. And afterwards, you asked an interesting question. You remember that question? How come there are no black faces in Moscow? And of course, the answer could only be, they didn't need slaves. They used peasants under the feudal system, you know, to do all of their slave labor, if you will. And anyway, we went on from there. And I'm so glad that you moved this far along. It's been so many years, and here you are.
Thank you.
Very nice.
And here we are. I'm not going to take up a lot of time. I did catch the article in the Grand Rapids Press, Grand Rapids Public School Board's staff brainstorm about district's future. Okay? And I noticed that you are open to partnering with local organizations and have partnered with us for 28 years. It's got to be the longest standing partnership of this sort in the nation, and you should be proud of that. We are. And it also talks about building a culture, a new culture in our schools. And if you look at the seventh codicil in our Week of Peace Education, it says, "Whereas there is a growing awareness of the need to learn the skills of conflict resolution in order to defuse the growth of violence in our communities, and whereas in the advent of the new millennium, there is a growing desire to change our communities and schools from a culture of violence to a culture of peace." And our program brings with it the hope that we can do exactly that. I'm going to allow Kathy to introduce herself and explain the work that she's doing at Southwest Campus. We have partnered with the Gerald R. Ford Middle School for several years and have had peace celebrations there, and have had a major effect, I think, on the student body. But I think Kathy would like to talk about some of the work that she's done.
And this is just to kind of... By the way, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with all of you, and I actually am a clinician working at Southwest Community Campus through the KSSN program that you all may know about. And as a result of that, I've been able to kind of merge, be able to work together with my familiarity with involvement with Institute for Global Education to bring the peace and conflict resolution idea to the fairs with the community, presenting the community partners in our single de Mayo Festival, which is going to change its name next year. But anyway, it's already been a result of that partnership. What I wanted to say was that what we're hoping with this peace resolution and the international, the Week of International Peace Recognition is, which happens to be the week before, I think, our price starts, is to invite all the schools and community to send forth their wishes for the coming school year and in the future in general. There are some specific ideas here about how to do that at Southwest Community Campus. We are involved in also an exhibition that will be presented at that time at the public library downtown, which artist Reyna Garcia, who happens to be here by chance in the audience, and did, worked with the youth on word, Words Are Us, writing and painting in Spanish and English about their experience with immigration and their hope for the future. So, we're tying that in just into a general kind of message to themselves, the students, our families, and the community, and how we can have, you know, go forward to the school year and the community with this message. So, look out for that.
Yep. That's Kathy Sagan, the other I didn't introduce her properly. If the board has any questions, we could entertain them now, or you can get in touch with us through IGE.
Any questions?
Yeah, just real quick. Thanks for your, Kathy, with KSSN and Southwest. It's fantastic. And Kathy, I know that if there's a cause worth being involved in, Kathy's there, so anyway, I know that because we're both there, so anyway.
Anyone else? Thank you for being here. Is that for your celebrations? No student rep yet. I do have one card for public comment on board agenda items. Mr. Helder, if there are any others for board agenda items, please send those up. Just raise them, and someone will bring those to us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Superintendent, board members, first off, I apologize for my informal attire, but I was downstairs bargaining all day, and the heat in that room is unbearable.
Because of bargaining, or just the temperature?
I don't know. The air conditioning or something.
You'll have to ask them.
In any case, I just returned from our summer leadership conference and MEA board meeting, and trying to catch up on what had taken place in the week that I've been gone. I noticed there was an ad hoc policy meeting recently to discuss teacher discipline, and I want to make sure I have this correct. Teacher discipline, demotion and dismissal, performance evaluation systems, layoff and recall of teachers, placement of teachers and attendance. I recognize that the law says that the board need policies on those things. In fact, it's probably a year overdue for policies on those, and I know that you're aware of that. I don't know if you've been advised, I presume you have, I assume your attorneys told you, that you're legally required, at least with some of those things, to have discussions with us about that. And we have not had those discussions, and I'm just concerned that there's an understanding that a discussion means we're going to be in the formative stage rather than simply showing up at a board meeting and going, "Hey, just so you know, this is the new policy. Here's your chance to discuss it." We've had a real concern that a number of changes are being made in the legislature and elsewhere by people with no teaching experience who don't understand really what teaching is. They think they know what it is because they were in a classroom once. And that's just not a valid perspective in this case. So, certainly, I think probably everybody here has my cell number. At some point, we need to have those discussions, and if we can schedule those, I'd appreciate it. Beyond that, I noticed one of the, I guess, big things on the agenda tonight, thank you, is the superintendent's contract, or interim superintendent's, or will be superintendent's contract, or however you'd like to say that, to the public. I know that you're going to hear a number of things through the media. They're going to talk about how this is a lot of money, a little better than $200,000 or something like that in salary and benefits. Here's what I would say about that. The superintendent has a major impact on student achievement. This board is trying to do what it has to do to recruit and retain quality individuals. Obviously, in my new position as lead spokesman and bargainer for our bargaining team, there are things I can't say to you, so this meeting will go a little faster for you. But I can say that when it comes to student achievement, the number one individual hired by a public school that affects student achievement is a teacher. And my question to you, which is merely a theoretical question that you may wash to ponder, is what are you doing to recruit and retain the best teachers?
Thank you.
Thank you.
No other cards for agenda item, public comments. Right into reports. Madam Secretary.
Yes, I want to read a statement. The annual school district elections for Board of Education members will be held Tuesday, November 6, 2012. Candidates for the Board of Education must file nominating petitions with the city clerk on the 12th Monday before the election at 4:00 p.m. Therefore, the deadline for filing is Tuesday, August 14, 2012, at 4:00 p.m. There are two vacancies for four-year terms ending December 31, 2016.
Superintendent reports. Any reports for you?
Just a few short. First, I'd like to welcome the Hispanic Center parent group that is here tonight. Thank you for attending. Thank all of you. The second is Brian Gam. Brian Gam, I would ask that Brian Gam come forward and talk about the opening of school for the alternative calendar. Our teachers came back today, so.
Good evening, Madam President, Superintendent Neal, board. Today was our first day back for teachers in our five alternative calendar schools. As you know, Coit, Dickinson, Campah Park campus, and Grand Rapids Montessori all started today. Teachers reported for professional development. They have professional development again tomorrow, and then a classroom setup day for August 8th. You'll notice a lot of aggressive campaigning, brochures being passed out, neighborhood walks, phone calls. We're asking our teachers to make personal contact with the teachers or the students in their classrooms. And I personally went to all of the sites except for campus, didn't make it to campus today. And staff is in place. Training was taking place. A lot of enthusiasm. Teachers understand the work that needs to be done, the importance of reaching out to the community. They know the charter's in the back door. They know the MEEP test coming in October, and everybody's really on board, and there's a feeling of collaboration and high energy. So, it's good to be back in session.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Brian? Anyone?
Questions? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
We have a couple of other important dates, and I will be sharing with you as well as with the public. The first is our park party, so just make a note of that. When you guys... It isn't the park party. It is the back-to-school celebration. Sorry, we can't call it a park party, guys. It's a celebration, so I want to invite all of you to attend. And the other is, I would ask that if you would like to come up from the Hispanic Center, I know you didn't want to.
Jerry, why don't you come up?
Come on, Jerry. And at least introduce the group. He didn't want to do that. Thank you, Jerry.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Aguilar. I'm the parent leadership coordinator at the Hispanic Center, and I appreciate the opportunity. And I just wanted to introduce the group. Not all of them could make it today. We have a group of 22 parents that what, one of our goals is for them to be more involved, not just directly with the schools where their kids are at, but in the entire educational process, from, you know, policymaking, like you guys are involved in. We're also going to go visit the State Board of Education, city council meeting, and also a couple of the participants were fortunate enough to go to a national conference where they talked a lot about, you know, Title I, Title III. So, they understood where a lot of the decision-making is coming from. Because sometimes there may be some, you know, okay, why does one school have these services as opposed to others? So, that's some of the training that we have done with our parents.
Excellent.
Want to introduce?
Do you want to introduce?
Yes.
To have them introduce themselves? Is that easier?
You can start at this end. You can just introduce yourself.
My name is Valor Andrade. Hi.
Hi.
My name is Pilar Ramirez.
My name is Manuel Rivas.
My name is Maitreya Martinez.
Mary Avila. It's really nice to be here today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rosa Corona.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We look forward to partnering with you.
Okay, thank you.
Great work.
That's all you have?
Action items.
We have one action item. It's the superintendent's contract. Need a motion on the floor so we can begin discussion?
Motion to approve the superintendent's contract?
I will support that.
Floor is open for discussion. Any questions, comments?
Actually, I'd like to...
Dr. Baker?
This is really fantastic that we're here doing this tonight, and I'd like to actually, I'd like to talk a little bit. I think that there's a lot of discussion. Perhaps most, if not all, in the community expect us to, because they agree with us that Teresa Neal deserves to be the superintendent of this district. I think that it's important that everyone in the community understands the seriousness that this group came to. We spent, you know, way a year thinking about where, how we'd get here, and we're pretty, I think, proud of the way we got here, and so I think it's really important. And I'd like to just give some perspective on what I've seen in terms of the narrative of the timeline of getting here, and I'm sure others will have that. But I think it's really important that we understand that, that, you know, these, having, being in a position to have a permanent, to hire a permanent superintendent now, we weren't necessarily expecting to be able to do so quickly. And so, I just want to talk a little bit. In the fall, we engaged in a public process where the Kennedy Elementary School District and Michigan Association School Boards helped us to go through a public process. I think that the important part of that public process, other than informing the board and then later Superintendent Neal of the work that needs to happen in the district and the work that was working and the work that wasn't working in the district, was very important. But I think that, that it brought an ownership to the district. And to some extent, I think that some people might be disappointed that they didn't get to continue to be a part of that process because we were pretty impressed at the beginning and then very impressed into Teresa's term with the work that she was doing. I think that we decided that we needed an interim. In December, we hired an interim. In this interim, had an excellent analysis of the work that needed to happen. She received a lot of community support, and really, you know, an amazing amount of community support. She eased a lot of concerns that were happening in the district. We went through a very extensive evaluation process that led to Teresa doing a lot of work in terms of justifying the direction that she was sending the district. Part of what she discerned was some fairly immediate work that needed to happen, and couldn't wait. All of those things led to us deciding that we needed to hire a permanent superintendent now, and we needed to begin to work together with that superintendent. I think that the contract reflects some things. It reflects, this contract reflects concerns that we and the public had about the contract of the previous superintendent, and it seeks to balance that out. I think it also balances out the concerns that Mr. Helder raised about the recruiting and retaining quality teachers, and I would also say, other administrators, especially principals. I think that this district hasn't been able to compensate people as well as we, perhaps that's my personal perspective. And this contract, this contract balances those out. It balances the accountability that we were concerned about and the public was concerned about, but it also sought to, you know, balance the fairness of what, about what Superintendent Neal deserves. It's a very difficult time, and I really want people to know that although we didn't go through a public vetting process of bringing in a search firm, I think that we did put, this board paid a lot of attention to the community in every different way. I think that this board is a board that is very connected to the community and very concerned with what the community has to say, and took that into account as we made this decision. And so, with that, we came to a place that I think that we're all very happy to be at. And, you know, I strongly support this contract, and it means a lot for me to say that, especially where I was at with the last time I had a chance to vote on a superintendent contract. This contract represents the concerns of this community and does it with the full board consideration of the work that needs to be done. So, anyway, I'm very happy that we're doing this today.
Ms. Geetson?
First of all, I'd like to thank my board colleagues for the work in pulling this contract together in very short order. And so, Dr. Baker, Mrs. Slade, and President Lanier, thank you for taking that extra duty on. We really appreciate it because I felt, I felt well represented. I would like to thank Mrs. Neal slash Teresa for doing an incredible amount of work in your interim capacity. It's not easy to be interim. You don't have that official title, so you work a lot through influence, and I think that's your style anyway, in spite of your title, and I think that's what's going to make you a very good superintendent officially. The difference in this district, to me, is palpable. I don't get nervous anymore when people walk up to me. Especially teachers. It's, yeah, it's really refreshing. So, thank you very much. And I get a lot of feedback through my connections in the community, in the business community, and they are all extraordinarily positive. And I appreciate that because that respect was earned in the last 100-plus days, so. And last but not least, I'm greatly looking forward to working with you closely through the duration of your contract that we're just about ready to bolt on.
Thank you. Ms. Slade?
I would just like to add my voice. I could not be happier than to have Teresa here, and along with the gentleman, I've known Teresa since she was a 15-year-old co-op in the district, so I'm very, very pleased that you're here and couldn't be happier.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Fall?
I want to express my pleasure at being able to offer the contract to Ms. Waddell Neal. One of the strongest things that came out of the community process last fall is that, and from this board, is that we wanted somebody local, somebody regional, somebody that people knew their work record, they knew who they were, they knew their leadership capacity, and that person also had a stake in this community. They cared about this community. They weren't just here to advance their career, and we have that person. And it's thrilling to me. One of the things I get impatient with is seeing the latest and greatest in education being sort of brought in, or reinventing the wheel. And I think we have leadership here that understands sustainability, that looks at what's working and wants to sustain it, not replace it with a new idea that may advance them and find a way to sustain it. At the same time, I see courage to put transparency and accountability with what we aren't doing well. And that's the kind of leadership we're going to need going forward with this district. And I've, we've got a lot of work ahead, but I have a lot of confidence. One of the things I hold highest in leadership capacity is the ability to be receptive, to build your vision out of receptivity, and I think you have it in spades. And so, I'm thrilled going forward.
Dr. Randalls?
Well, Wendy took all of my ideas. I go figure.
Don't email her first.
But I think really the most important part of, from when Mrs. Neal began working as interim superintendent, her level of leadership and skill and her deep understanding already prior to doing the consulting with everyone in the district and outside of the district, she had a great idea of exactly what, how this district should look and what we should be striving for. And she's been able to really impact a lot of people to have that happen. So, it's great that we're able to move forward.
Reverend Hoskins?
I echo all those comments. I'm just glad that we have gotten to this point. I think Mrs. Slade was saying how long she's known her. I've known her since kindergarten, kindergarten together, middle school. Then they split us up in high school. This is my time. Why is it when I start talking, everybody else want to talk? Guess I'm just that popular.
Because you're so relatable.
Anyways, they split us up in high school, but we graduated the same year. I know her family. Comes from a good family, strong family, and her current husband, her family now, I'm talking family as far as her siblings, her parents, but even now, with her husband and her children, still a great family. So, congratulations, and whatever I can do from my, from my position, I'm certainly here to support you.
I'd just like to quickly say, I believe this contract provides the stability that the district needs at this time. As we're looking forward to reinventing this district, we need to have stability, and I think the comments that Wendy made about sustaining what's working is very important as we're trying to transform this district, and I know that Teresa or Mrs. Neal will provide us with that. Thank you. Thank you for, for your work and actually your contribution to this contract as well because it was a partnership as we were working through the language in this contract.
Any other questions, comments? Caldwell?
With pleasure. Slade?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Felb?
Yes.
Geetson? Yes. Hoskins?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Randalls?
Yes.
Ross?
Waiting on James.
Excuse my slow writing.
Right out. Don't you go ahead.
Slade?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Faub?
Yes.
Geetzen? Yes. Hoskins?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Randalls?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
President Lanier?
Yes.
Motion carries 9-0.
There are no discussion items. I have one card for public comment on non-agenda items. If you want to give public comment on any agenda items, please raise your card and someone will come and grab it for you. And Mary Jo Thompson, come on down. You're the next contestant.
I couldn't help but continue.
Price is Right. Is it Price is Right?
Price is Right.
Someone needs to fill John in on that.
How much is this bottle of water? Good evening, Mary Jo.
Good evening. You released my nervousness. I'm sorry. Mary Jo Thompson, I've had the pleasure of sending 156 kids through GRPS. I'm a foster mom. Most of my kids, a lot of my kids lately have gone to Lincoln due to severe abuse. My family got a kiddo that wanted to go to regular school, regular school. I got this in the mail. I was like, oh my God, we read it, and I thought, I want to send you. Where do you want to go? He said, I want to go to Shawnee. I came down here, I filled out the paperwork, and she said, you're not allowed. I said, what? She said, no, honey, you live at Leonard and Oakley. You can only go to CA Frost. And I said, why? And she says, well, you can choose to take him to these schools. And I said, if I'm going to take him to a school, no offense, I will take him to a charter where I will at least feel wanted. This is my school. I've sent all these kids here. I've been on three PTO boards at the same time. When I had a meeting, I went to the wrong school one day because I forgot which school was having the PTO meeting. But to ask down here, and she showed me all the maps, he comes, there is a thing called the foster care law, which states that the last school that he attended, he could go back to, and the busing would continue. My kiddo's had a couple disrupted placements, so he's kind of been all over. The last school he went to was Campa, and I wanted to send him there, and they were very adamant that he could not go there. I had to send him. And I want him to have a good school, and I was really excited because I talked to other parents whose kids were at these schools, Montessori. I'm a huge Montessori fan. A congress Montessori, our little girl was four and a half when she was killed by a drunk driver, the tree in front of Congress Montessori is in our daughter's memory. I'm a huge fan of these, and I said, which one? I was so excited. He came down here with me, and he was like, they won't let me go to school here? I said, we're going to go. I wanted him to come here tonight, but he was chicken. So I just want to know, why do you send me these things if my children cannot go? I mean, we're so excited. And she showed me the map. If I lived at Campa, I would have my choice of five schools. Because I live here, I get one that's full. I love Pam Wells at CA Frost. I'm an old timer. She's no longer there, I understand, but I wanted my kid to go to GRPS, and I don't know what to do. So I said, I'm very much a, let's go to the heart of the matter, so that's why I'm here. And I don't know what to do.
Good for you.
So if somebody could get back to me. Thank you. Please. Just punch her all here.
Thank you. I have met him. That's all you have?
Yes. Thank you.
Action items?
Yeah.
One, gracias. We have one action item, it's the superintendent's contract. Need a motion on the floor so we can begin discussion? Motion to approve the superintendent's contract?
I will support that.
Floor is open for discussion. Any questions, comments? I did, I forgot my phone number. Okay, thank you. Superintendent's comments?
A couple things. First, I would like to speak to you after the board meeting, and it really is because of the busing. That's, that's the, the reason. And it was a, a budget reduction many years ago that we did, the theme school transportation, but I will talk to you as soon as we're finished here. The other is, I would like to thank the board members, members of this community as well of the, as the staff for allowing me to represent you as a superintendent of literally the best district around. And I believe that I've been here for a long time, because I do believe that it is the best district, and I'm honored to lead us for the next few years as we continue down this path to close the achievement gap as well as to become number one. So, thank you.
Great. Mr. Ross, comments?
No comment.
Ms. Slade?
I made my comment, thank you.
Ms. Geetzen? I'm just delighted to be here and have had the opportunity to have a unanimous vote for Mrs. Neal's contract.
Great. Dr. Baker?
Yeah, I want to say thanks again to Jerry and the Hispanic Center for coming here tonight and the parent leadership planning and making sure people know where to come to take ownership of their, of their schools. And I'm glad I was distracted when Brian was here upfront, but school starts on Thursday, and so my, so those back-to-school sales, you know, are happening by Thursday. But I still figure the new pants can wait till Labor Day or something.
At least.
So anyway, especially though for families that make sure that their kids get to school, because the benefit of the alternative calendar is so, kids are prepared by starting to school earlier, and if they're not in school, obviously, they don't get that benefit. So it is a benefit to have the kids there in the alternative calendar at school, so please make sure that if you know a family that's there, that they know. This, to some extent, always hits us as a surprise, and it seemed especially a surprise this year, but it's the same date as it was last year, basically, and so it starts on Thursday. So make sure they're here. And I'm really happy that we're welcoming Teresa on, so that's it.
Reverend Hoskins?
Yeah, welcome back, teachers. And so I'm looking forward to an awesome year this year. And let me finish my other comments about Mrs. Neal. Knowing her from childhood up, I know that because of these signs we have, it says, am I doing what is right for our children? She will.
Mr. O'Connor?
I'm very excited to have Ms. Neal here for the next several years, hopefully. Don't forget tomorrow is an election day, so get out and get out and vote.
Dr. Randalls?
I made my comment earlier. Thank you.
And my only comment is that I need to talk with Mary Jo at the end of this meeting, because it's 7:09 or something. Thank you, Mary Jo.
A wager?
Wait, Mary Jo. Hang tight, Mary Jo.
Isn't vetting illegal?